That's why we, that's why we're here tonight. We refuse resumations tonight and we have to wait 14 days for the annexation. And then we have to get married, so I got myself 30 days. Yeah.
Hey. What's up?
What's up?
You?
All right, this one's on.
You, focus.
Focus.
We're all about focus, you know?
Get it done.
Right?
We're going for a record tonight.
Okay. Focus. Get it over, get it over. Yeah. Sound good? Good for you. Pleasure or business? Yes. Really? Okay. Oh, really? Now, where is he? How are you flying? From Chicago or from here? Where are they routed? Where are you routed to?
Chicago.
You have 3 minutes, will you? Bring your buddies if you got any. You get 5 bucks, 5 bucks for everyone you bring.
They all gathered right here.
That's not a lot.
Trying to make a brand.
Right? You can't all be in a spot, can you?
They're in transit.
Oh.
It's a chance.
Oh, Lord. No, I don't want to get on that stuff anymore, so then everybody's dead.
I can't let you know.
We shouldn't have done that the last time.
But this was like, 2 weeks ago, I got an email from her, so.
But she can make some of those presentations after meeting, coming up on the meeting.
Coming to the meeting, so a lot of that.
A lot of that's gonna be in that agenda.
Mm-hmm.
To me, it sets the wrong precedent. And that's, that's not for today. I guess it's next month. Privilege of the poor. Ask people.
She probably, I was thinking.
Yeah, sorry.
And you know, um, Chair, she may not even come.
Where are you?
She may not even come.
Where are you at?
But you write a lot of updates can come from the committee.
Who's that gentleman? Is that gentleman right there?
I thought.
Uh, that's the big man.
I was afraid John, because I'm not sure. See, you would have made it before without a few prayers.
I know.
I'm taking it, I'm married a couple of years.
Okay. I know John's a lawyer, so. And I work here at the. Company, have you been on?
Yeah, I've been one.
I'm telling you, that was probably one of the best times I ever had.
Everybody.
And there's some people from years ago, and I was gonna excite them.
Oh, like Karen Talker?
The center is gorgeous.
I'm gonna do that.
The center is gorgeous, and this gorgeous, just gorgeous. And just, the people just, just, well, they didn't have excellent job. And I think we saw.
Grammy, you ready? Grammy, you ready? Good evening, the Monday, November 12, 2018, Common Council Meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Pastor Jason Miller of South Bend City Church, thank you, sir.
All right. Before I pray, let me invite anyone who wishes to join me in spirit. And if prayer is not a word that works for you, I totally get it. Perhaps we could meet each other halfway and see this as a shared meditation on our best hopes for our city. Let's pray. Loving God, thank you for the life we share in South Bend. Thank you for the sacred privilege of being neighbors. Today, we remember our nation's veterans and thank you for their willingness to live for something bigger than themselves, to live for our best ideals in our common life. Many of us like me humbly realize that we live a privileged existence with uncommon freedom because of their sacrifice. We ask you to teach us to wage peace with the same commitment and sacrifice that we bring to work. We pray for the members of the council, thank you for their service to our city, bless them for their sacrifice, grant them wisdom, courage, and unity in their mission, and through their work in ours, may our city become more and more a place where every kind of person has the opportunity to flourish. We pray in accord with all that is good and true and beautiful, and we pray in your name, and everyone who agreed said.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bill of Liberty and Justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. If you would, please turn yourself home to silent. Ms. Fowler will call.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride is in. Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Tescott?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Gordy?
Here.
Councilmember Furley?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Thank you. During, uh, sub, uh, report on Subcommittee Minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the October 22, 2018, meeting of the council and found them to be correct, therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Um, under Special Business, I'm gonna first, um, thank all our vets for their service, uh, to this country, to us, and we will never forget. Um, hopefully, we will not have these meetings anymore on Veterans Day. Uh, also, I entertain a motion to, uh, to cancel the December 24, uh, Common Council Meeting. Second. All in favor?
We have a discussion on that, that is, against Eve, and, uh, you know.
No. So, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, there are no reports from city offices, I see Laura Sullivan came in today to be with us, thank you so much. Um, now, entertaining motion arrives and join the Committee of the Whole.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. There are no reports from city offices, I see Laura Sullivan came in today to be with us, thank you so much. Um, now, entertaining motion arrives and join the Committee of the Whole.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, there are no reports from city offices, I see Laura Sullivan came in today to be with us, thank you so much. Um, now, entertaining motion arrives and join the Committee of the Whole.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, there are no reports from city offices, I see Laura Sullivan came in today to be with us, thank you so much. Um, now, entertaining motion arrives and join the Committee of the Whole.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. There you go, Gavin.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session, this is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition, your comments will be limited to 5 minutes per bill. With that, would the city clerk please read 5618?
5618, Public Hearing on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Annexing Two and Bringing Within the City Limits of South Bend, Indiana, and Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located in Clay Township, Contiguous therewith, Councilman District Number Four, For 17330, State Road 23, South Bend, Indiana, Previously, Previous Bill 1217, Public Hearing Portion Only.
Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
Sub move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Zodi Annexation Committee met, Mr. Chair, this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation, um, that was based on the written commitments.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening, Angela Smith in the Area Plan Commission with offices located on 11th and 20th Building. First of all, thank you for canceling Christmas Eve, that was one of those days I was not looking forward to.
We have so much zoning due.
Um, before you, is a petition to rezone the northeast corner of State Road 23 and Douglas. The property is currently zoned C commercial in the county, tied to a final site plan that limits it to a financial institution. Um, when the property owner has decided to renovate the property and they're connecting to city utilities, they were encouraged in our here before you tonight to seek to, uh, rezone and annex within the city limits of South Bend to CB community business. The property to the east is already in the city, zoned CB community business, and to the north, in the city, zoned O office, daycare facility. To the south, we still have B business in the county and our single family, and across State Road 23, we have medical complex and an assisted living facility zoned, um, B business and R2 residential. The current site, as you can see here, is a former, uh, financial institution which will be demolished to make way for a gas station. There is a great change in some entrance restrictions here that the petitioner will be working on to modify to, to make the site work. This is the site plan that was presented to the Area Plan Commission, um, not a significant amount has changed since the Area Plan Commission, although the, the entire site's been shifted so that they can meet the setback requirement, and the drive entrance has been moved further from the intersection to share with the adjacent property to the east, which is gonna be a gas station under the CB community business district. Um, for interview this evening, the amended ordinance adds a section of the ordinance to allow for this to be tied to the written commitments that were presented, we added the written commitment number nine, which would allow for no automotive service or repair will occur on the site, um, after the committee meeting this afternoon. Um, this came to you from the Area Plan Commission with an unfavorable recommendation back in 2017, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, and actually, we'll hear from the petitioner and then we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Steven Studer, I'm attorney with offices at 4101 Edison McFarquharway, Michigan, Indiana. Uh, here also this evening with me are two of the owners of the property, Mr. Patel, Mr. Singh, and also Mr. Brian McMorris of Atten March, who can answer any additional questions on the site plan. Uh, as Angela mentioned, we're seeking to rezone from County District C Commercial to City District CB Community Business and Annex to the city. Um, I'd be happy to go through the book that I presented to the committee, but in the interest of brevity, it might make more sense that I ask for any additional questions. Uh, as Angela mentioned, we did agree to the other commitment, not to have any service or care on the site.
Thank you so much, are there any questions for presenter or petitioner at this time? Yes?
Yes, could you please, um, share about your interaction with the neighbors, people who have come to the area plan meeting that was in opposition, and could you share that, because I think that had a good, um, understanding of why we have a change in our decision tonight from what the area plan has recommended?
Sure, thank you, Councilman. Um, yeah, there's 2 issues, one is that we met with, uh, Councilman Davis and Councilman Broden regarding the site plan and issues regarding, uh, uh, cut out road costs, et cetera, and we did make a change to the site plan, we moved the, uh, the entrance on Douglas Road, 60 feet to the east, 140 to 200 feet, which is part of the commitment. Uh, we had 5 neighbors originally that had expressed some concerns at the Area Plan Commission, one of those I mentioned was North Liberty, uh, one was a, uh, owner of competitor, uh, and, and 3 other ones that are in the neighborhood that we did meet with, we met with 2 of those 3, um, and they expressed no concerns and also advised that they would, they would talk to the third person as well. Uh, their only concern was that we were not gonna ask for substantial variances that would change the character of the neighborhood, and we're not asking for variances, so they were satisfied, they were comfortable, and, uh, they've expressed no opposition to this particular petition.
And what you did with the Exxon sign, you said, um, like the color of the.
Oh, yes, that was with the, uh, City Department of Community Investment, I think that's the right term. Yeah, I did hear. Um, typically Exxon would have a, a lit up, um, this is gonna be an Exxon gas station, they would have a bright red, their logo colors are bright red, et cetera. Uh, in order to keep with the character of the neighborhood, we have toned that down to keep with the, the current, uh, color scheme of, of brick and, and browns, and so we've toned it down to meet with the, the current standard of the neighborhood, so we would be to do that as well. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thank you. And we'll be using, by the way, monument sign, no, no pilot sign, we'll be using a monument sign at the corner as well, more in character with, with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions for presenter or petitioner, we'll move to the public portion, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed, back to the council.
Make a motion to, um, um, bring to the full council a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone? For the substitute version?
For the substitute version. Did anyone get it? He has it right here.
There's a motion for a favorable recommendation and a second for the substitute version, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Entertaining a motion to rise and resolve?
Can you just email that to the rest of everybody later, for the record?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Entertaining a motion to rise and resolve from the Committee of the Whole, so move.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I'm at peace.
Full council is now back in session, there are no further, uh, readings tonight, we'll move to resolutions. Um, Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1859?
1859, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for provisions of services to an annexation area in Clay Township, Old National Annexation Area.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. President, the Zodi Annexation Committee met this afternoon, we bring this part of the project 1859 with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. DeVita?
Good evening, Michael DeVita, planner with the City Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Um, so this fiscal plan is for 1.9 acre annexation, that's been requested by the property owner of 17730 State Road 23, which as you just, uh, heard, petitioner proposes to develop the site for a gas station and a maintenance store. So, no capital improvements are planned by the city as part of this annexation, water is already available along both State Road 23 and Douglas Road with sewer already available on Douglas as well. The adjacent portion of Douglas is already within city limits, a portion of State Road 23 will be annexed, but will continue to be maintained by indoc. Annexation area will be added to the Common Council's 4th District and served by Police Speed 11, Fire Station 3, Emergency Medic 3, and Code Enforcement Area 4. These and other non-capital surfaces, services will be in place within 1 year of the effective date of the, uh, annexation, with response times comparable to other areas of the city. I would then ask for the council's adoption of this resolution, I'd be happy to take any questions, Mike.
Any questions?
I have a question, may, not necessarily for, um, Mr. DeVita, but in reference to this bill regarding 5618 to our turn, the 5618, the third reading of that will be at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, and the rationale?
And the state statute, the final vote of the council cannot be made until after 14 days of pass from the public hearing.
But the fiscal plan should not be voted on that?
Yes.
And then the fiscal plan can be voted on, and then, um, 14 days after all of that, we all get.
Fiscal plan has to be approved before the annexation ordinance can be voted.
So, the 5618 next time will just be a third reading, will not necessarily be heard in the afternoon or in the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, there'll be no public hearing, this is council portion.
Okay, I'm at peace, thanks, sir.
Good. Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. DeVita? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1859, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1859, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second. Ms. Fowler will call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tescott?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Eight a.
Thank you, uh, 1865, please.
1865, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 4836 Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 7-year real property tax abatement for now committed LLC.
Thank you, uh, this being a confirming, we'll go to the presenter. Please state your name and address and brief statement.
Good evening, Council, Austin, Dallas, 14th floor, Community Investment Department, was here a couple of weeks ago representing, um, Ms. Patel and Neil Keth LLC for the Dairy Queen off of Western Avenue. Um, she sends her apologies, she was unable to make it, had family obligations out of town. Um, but again, the 7-year real property tax abatement, over 1.6 million dollars in investment, um, and over 40 plus jobs coming to that area of town, um, the Community Investment Department is really excited and eager for this development.
Thank you, is there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, sir, we'll open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1865, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1865, please come to the podium. Back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tescott?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Eight a.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Fowler, 1867, please.
1867, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3201 West Coward Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 5-year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Thank you, um, is there a presenter?
Sir. Good evening, Dan Buckenmeyer, DCI, 14th floor of this building. So, South Bend Ethanol, uh, plant that started production here in South Bend back in 84, went through some financial difficulties more recently. Uh, at the end of last year, we started to talk to a few different potential purchasers, including Mercuria, who ended up purchasing the, uh, uh, plant, and worked with them, really starting back, uh, at the end of last year through now, to work with them and understand how the city could support them in making this, uh, great investment in the city. Uh, their investment is gonna be about 30 million dollars in new equipment, it is a personal property tax abatement, uh, will raise their manufacturing capacity, it will make the plant more efficient, it will allow them to purchase more, uh, corn from regional farmers. Um, the estimated economic impact across the, uh, region is estimated to be about 140 million dollars annually, in terms of just the ripple effect of what the, uh, new and expanded plant will do. 66 jobs will be retained, 5 new jobs will be created, um, the average wage there is about 31 dollars per hour. Um, we'll also, uh, with this expansion, make South Bend a direct international exporter of another byproduct, uh, that being distilled dried grains, which will be exported directly from South Bend to, uh, uh, I believe domestic and foreign markets. So, the tax abatement itself is a 5-year abatement, during that period, uh, we are estimating that about 480,000 dollars in taxes will be abated, however, during that 5-year period, they will still pay over 3 million, 3.2 million dollars in taxes. Uh, when you look at it across, we usually have the slide up here, a 10-year look, uh, across the 10-year, uh, horizon, over the next 10 years with newly expanded plant, uh, between personal, real, and low it, their tax total, even with this abatement, will be well over 8.2 million dollars contributed to the city and its residents. Uh, DCI brings it with, uh, a positive recommendation and hopes for your support.
Thank you, councilmembers, any questions?
A general question in nature, um, with regard to tax abatements, I believe with, let me go back, so with regard to, um, uh, TIF dollars, and is it true also with tax abatements, that there's an annual report or scorecard, you know, relative to these projections in terms of economic impact, um, wages, jobs, salaries?
Yes, yes.
I know, I think I've seen it before, but.
Yes, well, specifically with tax abatements, there is an annual CF1 report, is the designation which comes, uh, is due by May 15th, and that outlines all of those elements, you know, what, how they're doing, uh, as far as a track record on investment made, jobs created, and so on and so forth, and then DCI, uh, tracks that, and of course, we give that report to you by June 15th every year.
And then is that, uh, just a follow-up question?
Sure.
Is that, um, does that have a look back as well, or, or do you revisit, let's say, I'm, I'm, so if it's an annual, uh, look, does it go back to, um, tax abatements that were granted 4 or 5 years ago?
Well, each tax abatement would have its own unique reporting.
Right.
Uh, so if there were, per chance, a, a company has a real, uh, property tax abatement as well as a personal property tax abatement, they would report out to us on both of those, and I think to answer the first part of your question, it is a cumulative report.
Cumulative, thank you.
But we collect those year over year, so we can still track the annual progress, if you will.
And does council get benefit of that, um, and that's with, I'm sorry, that's within the CF1?
Yes.
The cumulative aspect of those previous, okay, thanks. Um, thanks, I appreciate you clarifying that, I, I thought I had remembered seeing that, but I wasn't certain as to how, uh, how much depth as well goes into that scorecard and what is actually reported out, but.
We're all gonna dig deeper a few minutes.
I'll follow up with you on that, but I'd like to walk through that again, thanks.
Certainly.
Are there any other questions, council? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1867, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1867, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second. Oh, uh, Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Preston?
May.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
7 honors.
Thank you, we'll move to first readings, Ms. Fowler, would you please read 5718?
5718, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, first, East West Alley, lying west of Long Street and north of Kobe Street, Kobe Boulevard, running west 158 feet length and terminating at an existence of north, south, alley, all in South Bend, Indiana.
Mr. President, I recommend this be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for second reading in public hearing on 11/26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, 5818.
5818, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, north, south portion of Stanson Street, 40 inches width, running south 140 feet from South Rightaway of East Randolph Street, ending at Rightaway of East West Alley between Robinson and Hope Streets.
This also could be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for November 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 5918.
5918, first reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1405.
Okay, I'm at peace there, sir.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. DeVita? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1859, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1859, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption.
Second, Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschke?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Uh, 1865, please.
1865, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 4836 Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a seven year real property tax abatement for now committed LLC.
Thank you. Uh, this being a confirming, we'll go to the presenter. Please state your name and address and brief statement.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Austin Adams, Fortune Floor Community Investment Department was here a couple weeks ago representing Ms. Patel and Neil Keth LLC for the Dairy Queen off of Western Avenue. Um, she sends her apologies, she was unable to make it, had family obligations out of town. Um, but again, the seven year real property tax abatement, over 1.6 million dollars in investment, um, and over 40 plus jobs coming to that area of town. Um, the community investment department is really excited and eager for this development.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, sir. We'll open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1865, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1865, please come to the podium. Back to council.
Motion for adoption. Second, Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschke?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Fowler, 1867, please.
1867, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3201 West Coward Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Thank you. Um, is there a presenter?
Sir. Good evening, Dan Buckenmeyer, DCI 14th floor of this building. So, South Bend Ethanol, uh, plant that started production here at South Bend back in 84, went through some financial difficulties more recently. Uh, at the end of last year, we started to talk to a few different potential purchasers, including Mercuria, who ended up purchasing the, uh, uh, plant and worked with them, really starting back at the end of last year through now, to work with them and understand how the city could support them in making this, uh, great investment in the city. Their investment is going to be about 30 million dollars in new equipment, and is a personal property tax abatement. Uh, will raise their manufacturing capacity, it will make the plant more efficient, it will allow them to purchase more, uh, corn from regional farmers. Um, the estimated economic impact across the, uh, region is estimated to be about 140 million dollars annually, in terms of just the ripple effect of what the, uh, new and expanded plant will do. 66 jobs will be retained, five new jobs will be created. Um, the average wage there is about 31 dollars per hour. Um, we'll also, uh, with this expansion, make South Bend a direct international exporter of another byproduct, uh, that being distilled dried grains, which will be exported directly from South Bend to, uh, uh, I believe domestic and foreign markets. So, the tax abatement itself is a five year abatement. During that period, uh, we are estimating that about 480,000 dollars in taxes will be abated. However, during that five year period, they will still pay over 3 million, 3.2 million dollars in taxes. Uh, when you look at it across, we usually have the slide up here, a 10 year look, uh, across the 10 year, uh, horizon, over the next 10 years with newly expanded plant, uh, between personal, real, and low it, their tax total, even with this abatement, will be well over 8.2 million dollars contributed to the city and its residents. Uh, DCI brings it with, uh, a positive recommendation and hopes for your support.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
A general question in nature. Um, with regard to tax abatements, I believe with, let me go back, so with regard to, um, TIF dollars, and is it true also with tax abatements, that there's an annual report or scorecard, you know, relative to these projections in terms of economic impact, um, wages, jobs, salaries?
Yes, yes.
I know, I think I've seen it before, but...
Yes, well, specifically with tax abatements, there is an annual CF1 report, is the designation which comes, uh, is due by May 15th.
Okay.
And that outlines all of those elements, you know, what, how they're doing, uh, as far as a track record on investment made, jobs created, and so on and so forth, and then DCI, uh, tracks that, and of course, we give that report to you by June 15th every year.
And then is that, uh, just a follow-up question?
Sure.
Is that, um, does that have a look back as well? Or, or do you revisit, let's say, I'm, I'm, so if it's an annual, uh, look, does it go back to, um, tax abatements that were granted four or five years ago?
Well, each tax abatement would have its own unique reporting.
Right.
Uh, so if there were, per chance, a, a company has a real, uh, property tax abatement as well as a personal property tax abatement, they would report out to us on both of those, and I think to answer the first part of your question, it is a cumulative report.
Cumulative, thank you.
But we collect those year over year, so we can still track the annual progress, if you will.
And does council get benefit of that, um, and that's with, I'm sorry, that's within the CF1?
Yes.
The cumulative aspect of those previous, okay, thanks. Um, thanks, I appreciate you clarifying that. I, I thought I had remembered seeing that, but I wasn't certain as to how, uh, how much depth as well goes into that scorecard and what is actually reported out, but I'll follow up.
We're only going to dig deeper a few minutes.
I'll follow up with you on that, but I'd like to walk through that again. Thanks.
Certainly.
Are there any other questions, council? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1867, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1867, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Oh, uh, Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll move to first readings. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 5718?
5718, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, first east west alley lying west of Long Street and north of Kobe Street, Kobe Boulevard, running west 158 feet length and terminating at an existence north, south alley, all in South Bend, Indiana.
Mr. President, I recommend this be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for second reading in public hearing on 11/26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, 5818.
5818, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, north, south portion of Stanson Street, 40 inches width, running south 140 feet from South Rida Way of East Randolph Street, ending at Rida Way of east west alley between Robinson and Hope Streets.
This also could be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for November 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 5918.
5918, first reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1405 and 1505 East Howard Street, Councilman District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move this be sent to the Area Plan Commission for, uh, their meeting on 12/18, and, uh, back to the Zoning and Annexation Committee for our first meeting of the year on 1/4. 1/14.
1/14.
Sorry. Second.
Read my own reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 6018, please.
6018, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 4,800,000 of the City of South Bend, Indiana Economic Development Tax Increment Revenue Bonds for the Community Education Center Project, designating bonds as limited obligations of the city, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Motion to send the community investment for 11/26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 6118, please.
6118, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 17 of the South Bend Municipal Code to add a new Article 14 establishing interim storm water utility rates, and amending Chapter 2, Article 14 to create a new fund for these revenues to be known as the Storm Sewer Fund Number 667.
I move to send this to the Utilities Committee for public hearing and second reading on 11/26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Two nays?
No, no, Arizona roll call?
Yes.
All right. Um, Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Nay, Broden.
I'm not speaking yet. Uh, council, sorry.
Move up to...
Vice President Davis?
I said nay.
You said nay, okay. Um, Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Nay.
Councilmember Teschke?
Aye.
President Scott?
Most controversial first reading I've ever heard.
Motion to send 1869 to zoning and annexation for 11/26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We will now turn to new business. I think we have something from Ms. White?
Yes, we want to share with the council and, um, audience that on tomorrow, Tuesday, November the 12th, we will be having a meeting with the faith leaders from the third and sixth districts in regards to, um, the community responsible synthetic drugs. That meeting will be held at the Gateway Church in South Bend, located on Michigan Street, and will be there from 6 until 7:30 on tomorrow. My next announcement deals with on Tuesday, November 27th, uh, part of the budget hearing process, we had, uh, started to have a discussion on TIF, and I indicated that we will continue that discussion, uh, prior to the end of this year. So, a meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, November the 27th, from 5 to 7 p.m., and will be in, uh, council conference room. And that discussion will be focusing on TIF.
Do you have a question on that?
Yeah, I have a question on that.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I heard that there was some state legislation that, um, providing TIF dollars, uh, people who get, um, abatements that now, after so many years that they, some, some other kind of thing after 10 years, that they have some kind of, um, they might have to give back, there's another clause that's there.
Okay, I will get into that.
And so, I, I will send you, you know, there's something about 10 years, and then they don't, it's almost to the sense that they do the 10 years, and they play as if they're going to do this, and then after the 10th year, that they can, if it's in a certain area of the community, it can be wiped away.
Like a distressed area?
Yes, distressed area.
Okay, we'll do some research, I'll ask our attorney to do some research on that. You know, thank for bringing that up, too.
Councilwoman White, I believe when you, uh, were talking about first meeting, you said Tuesday, uh, November 12th.
No, 20, uh, the first meeting is Tuesday, November 13th. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Preston?
Thank you for that. Quick, I'd like to just, uh, request that we look at, get an update, maybe at the next meeting, uh, maybe during committee on the South Bend home improvement, um, just to see how things have been going with that. They got over 400 applications, so I'm just wondering, you know, how the processing is.
Okay.
What's next?
Community investment?
Community investment, I think it would be a community investment.
Thank you. Uh, anything else to my right?
Yeah, just, um...
Joe Broden?
The Clubhouse of San Jose County is having an open house, um, Wednesday, the 14th, at their new home, if some folks were familiar with their services, to, um, the mentally ill in our community, but it is from 5 to 7, and they had asked that be extended to council members, with a short presentation at 6:15.
Again, date and time?
Date and time is November 14th, so this Wednesday, 11:53 Northside Boulevard, 5 to 7, and just location wise, that is adjacent to the Y MCA.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman, yeah? I have a question to ask of, um, Councilwoman Joe Broden. Did you schedule a, uh, community meeting this month?
19.
Okay, the 19th?
Yep.
Is that still being scheduled? A community meeting?
Neighborhood meeting.
A neighborhood meeting. Oh, that's just for northeast. I'm just responding to, no, that's out of cut council meeting.
Do you want council members to be there, to be present, or if...
Especially if that... I think you got the invitation from the neighbors specifically, from...
Yes.
Yeah, it's up to you to comment, it's out of, um...
Don't go there.
Whatever community, what's that?
It's not official council meeting.
It's not official council meeting or committee meeting, it's just a neighborhood meeting. And, uh, they've asked for city administration folks to be there to deal, to talk about some safety issues. I think even also some traffic issues.
Good.
Okay.
Large members, that's, that's good.
Yeah, you can go there, yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else, um, at this time for new business? Uh, Vice President Oliver Davis?
Uh, good, you have a neighborhood run village meeting tomorrow, uh, well, not Wednesday, at 6, and then there's another neighborhood meeting, um, at All Lady Hungry on Sunday at 4 o'clock, and the Wednesday meeting is at the Oliver Apartments, if you would like to come to that one. Um, as you all have received, um, a copy, on this past Sunday, I sent out a call to action regarding weather amnesty in St. Joseph County, regarding the fact that, um, it was our understanding that the, um, weather amnesty was going to start on November the 1st, and, um, go through April the 1st, and as we can all see, that, um, our cold weather has come to our area, um, snow outside and falling, and the season was cold, and so there were three, um, different key parts, and I would like for our clerk, um, to please read the call to action, and, uh, from that standpoint. And we'll read this into the record according, first of all, um, I, I did talk to our attorney, and could you please share with the advice that you gave me about reading it to the record?
My advice was simply that to bring it into the record, and there's going to be to issue a writ resolution, and this is a statement from you as a council member to the public.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll go ahead and read this now, from, uh, Councilmember Oliver Davis. A call to action regarding weather amnesty day in St. Joseph County, November 11, 2018. Dear local city and county elected officials, whereas the homeless weather amnesty site serves people from St. Joseph County, whereas the cold weather of being freezing temperatures is now in effect in our area, and whereas the homeless weather amnesty site was scheduled to be open on November 1st, 2018, whereas the homeless weather amnesty site requires a fire inspection to receive and permit to, to open if needed, and whereas the delay in opening the weather amnesty site has caused residents of our area to sleep in the cold, and whereas the homeless weather amnesty site is now scheduled to be open on December 1st, 2018, and whereas our local governments have buildings which have been used as warming sites, therefore, the following is being requested of our local, of our local city and county elected officials. Section 1, that our local governments open up warming sites until the we- weather amnesty site is open for use. Section 2, that letters be sent from each of our governments to state officials to expedite the opening of the site. Section 3, that our local governments come together in the year of 2019 to plan solutions for the homeless population. Sincerely, South Bend Councilman Oliver Davis, District Number 6, Vice President of the South Bend Common Council.
Thank you. Um, when you look at, um, our goal in reverse, in 2019, I would like for us, as you said in the note, address the, um, letter just to our local officials here in the city of South Bend, because as we have discussed, um, issues regarding homelessness is not just a South Bend issue, it's a issue that affects city of Michawaka, city of South Bend, the whole San Jose County, probably even those coming from Michigan and other areas. And so, it's really a time for us, like we have done with other bodies, I, I really believe in this concept of us, um, local elected officials coming together on major issues that have affected all of us, and hopefully in the 2019, we can have a meeting to invite, um, city of, um, Michawaka, um, to invite, um, the county leaders to come together, and let's have a full-fledged discussion, not only on the issue of weather amnesty early in the year, but also about ways that, what we already doing in our community, because we are doing a lot of things, that's why people come here, let's, let's, um, highlight our strengths that we are looking at, and then look at ways that we can definitely improve, because, you know, this is back-to-back years that we have missed the target date for November the 1st, and so, let's look at what we can put in place on an earlier basis, um, and we all know it's going to snow, we all know it's going to get cold, so let's go ahead and do that. Um, point number two, um, I was reading an article that, um, they did in the Tribune, which was good, um, that, um, in terms of some officials who may need to be contacted downstate, I don't know who they are, but we can determine who they are, if we could individually, or, um, those who would like to send a letter, can, from this body or others, can just send a letter just to let them know, um, that we, whatever can be done, um, that could expedite the time, um, we would encourage that, because to have to go the next three weeks or so, um, through Thanksgiving and the holidays is just a concern of mine. And, uh, then I explained, um, in terms of, number one, where we are looking at bringing everybody together from that standpoint, and to make sure that we are at our targets everything, so, um, looking at, uh, not only a city of South Bend effort, but a whole community effort of us coming together as elected officials, and, um, this was sent to all, um, because with all due respect to, um, Mayor Pete, so much of the pressure has been on the 14th floor issue regarding this matter, and I do believe that this should not be just in his office, I think this should be, as you see in the letter, to, uh, Mayor Wood, and to also our, um, President Morton, and to President Andy Castelli, and the commissioner level, so we can all come together to address this kind of a situation as our local communities. Any comments, any other issues that you'd like to share?
I guess I'd like to comment. I, I want to thank you for your, um, initiative in compiling this letter. I support your call for, um, uh, cross municipality collaboration, um, you know, foremost, we certainly need, um, to hit this amnesty day, uh, and it, I mean, it's, that's, that is a minimal threshold for us as a community, uh, to provide. Um, and that's not to say that, you know, we don't have, we have a very active, let me go back, we have a very active, and, uh, community, you know, that's huddled, that's meeting, that's providing direct services. Outstanding job. Leadership, quite frankly, um, leading the country, leading other communities. We have made historical investments, and have also dedicated, I think, a historical amount of time to, um, trying to develop solutions. But, missing that, this deadline, again, I think is very problematic. I think it's indicative of not just the need for cross collaboration, I mean, I, I love your call for cross collaboration with other municipalities, um, but I think it also, and as I had unsuccessfully attempted to make the case, uh, during the budget hearings, and even in earlier hearings last year, um, is, we really do need sustained leadership, um, sustained staff members working on this on a regular basis, because it's not just punching, you know, the checkoff of a timely weather amnesty facility opening, we have a huge, huge project that we have, uh, we, as a community, with the help of partners who've been, you know, in this field for years, um, you know, have spoken about the need, you know, for, for the broader center, um, that is, is a non, you know, non-shelter, so, um, those are just, you know, kind of the, the, the small and then the big things, I think, you know, that's on our list to, to get done as a city, and those are just, um, addressing and kind of trying to efficiently deal with what I consider our symptoms, not really the underlying problems. So, until we have sustained support and leadership, and I'm going to limb here, and I, I really don't care, until we have sustained leadership, and, and someone who has the ability and the day-to-day wherewithal to, to tackle this problem, not just the symptoms, but to go at the root causes, and, and I, I think the service providers have asked for us, they've asked for leadership, not just from the city of South Bend, but they've asked for leadership from other municipalities, to frankly pony up, so that we can do more in addressing, addressing the symptoms and the root causes. And, and I'm not, you know, I recognize we are working awfully hard within Department of Community Investment, that we've worked awfully hard within this administration, again, on precedent levels, however, we are at a critical time, we have critical needs, and I think we need, we need dedicated staff toward it, that can help pull together and even shift some of our service models that we have been used to, and that we have been, you know, trying to get at the problem. I mean, there, there's some radical shifts, I think the task force report was a start, but, you know, there's a flurry of activity, and then it drops, there's a flurry of activity, and then it drops. I think we really need a sustained person, and if it's the city of South Bend that has to lead it, then good for us, we should do it. And, and it doesn't take much, there's great models in other cities, um, Indianapolis is a fine model, the Community Foundation has come downboard, large organizations, the Lilly Endowment, we had business community leaders sit here last week, and they're only reflective, uh, the Volvos, I'll just name them, they're only reflective of a much larger business community that wants this, they want this solved, and they want different, you know, they want creative solutions, but until we have somebody that is actually, you know, that's their focus, that's their task, and it's their day-to-day, they show up at work and do it, then we're, we're just going to continue to be fragmented and continuing to miss critical deadlines, um, and, and we, we can't afford to do that. It's a, it's a reflection on us and our ability to do what, you know, our basic, one of our basic city jobs is, is, is housing. Um, and as I said, if it's, we have been leading, but we, I think we need to do more, and we need to make an investment, um, or maybe it's some job description changes, but this, this can't, you know, be volleyed around, and it, 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 we can't, you know, throw stuff at the neighborhoods and, um, you know, actually ask people to get it. This is a tough issue. It is a tough issue, if it was easy, it would have been solved a long time ago. I've had 30 years in this field, on the, deep in it, but also on... I've had thirty years in this field, on the, deep in it, but also on the sidelines, and the environment has changed, we need to, to reflect our ability, we need to somehow keep up with that change in a manner that moves the needle in a much more time-efficient manner to hit deadlines, in a minimum, for God's sake, the weather amnesty date.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
So, thank you for your leadership on the left, and everybody's leadership.
Anything else?
I'm at peace, I, again, I thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Broden, and you hit it, and you summarized it very well. So again, I encourage us all to join that call to action, talk to our leadership, talk, we all have different people we have influence with, so to share them, and I thank those who are already doing something, and let's move forward to take care of our obligations. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, part of your call to action was to pull the various entities together, so who would be doing that, what's the timeframe, when is that going to happen?
Good question. My job is to, I'd like to do this early in the spring, so you will be hearing me come back with, again, similar to what we have did with, I know President Scott's working on that with the issue with transportation, he told me, something on that same matter, where we come together, and also, that's just a starting point, and then we can, I envision us having representation from people, plus we want to have people who are at the table who are dealing with homelessness, those who are service providers, plus people who are actually dealing with housing and stability themselves. So many times leaders make all the decisions for people, but we want to have the input of people who are actually going through, so we can form a strong collaboration, to hear people who are business leaders, plus people who are actually living the challenges, because everybody sees the elephant in a different viewpoint, and we need to make sure that we have the good picture of it.
I think we have to work with that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman White. Okay, anything else? Seeing then, we'll open up for the floor, for privilege of the floor, privileged floor, this is where individuals wish to address the council will state their name and address. Individuals must be limited to, will be limited to three minutes only, maximum time period for this portion is thirty minutes, individuals may address only issues which the city has jurisdiction, individuals shall not be permitted to talk about any topics heard tonight on previous agenda, and we can assign any privileged floor request to either the city administration or committees. If you would, please go.
Sharon Benicki, thirty-eight, twenty-two Ford Street, as I promised you earlier, Tim, I'll keep it short and sweet. As most of you know, I was privileged this year and blessed to get my sidewalk and curb replaced, I'm the only one in the block. Oliver took care of me, of course, and all the rest of the neighbors hate me, and-
I know.
My concern is that the curb is already cracking, and I went by a couple of the other places where the city did the curb and sidewalk program, and I thought it was odd when they did mine, they didn't do the whole sidewalk, they did just the tree lawn part of the sidewalk, but they didn't do the sidewalk in front of my driveway, nor did they do the driveway entrance itself, and I'm not sure if that should have been done, or who to contact to see if it was supposed to be done.
I know.
I already sent Oliver pictures of it, because it was within thirty days of them putting the concrete in for the curb that was cracking.
That's, that's-
Um, yeah, so obviously it won't last another thirty years if it's already cracking, eight drain on your parade.
She's correct.
Also, I have a friend that lives in Southmore Housing, and it seems to me like that the city council gave Miami Hills tax abatements, or helped them with, they were gonna redo their housing, and part of the deal was they were gonna clean it up and get rid of the rough environment that's living there, and that hasn't happened. She has had three shootings from Miami Hills, you know, which butts up against Southmore within a month. I don't know if there's anything the city can do to help, and as far as getting rid of all the felony conviction people that live there, they never moved them out, they're still there, it's still a rat hole, so I don't know if there's anything that you could do to help the people in Southmore who are living there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Next name and address.
Hi, Council, St. Castle, four-two-two Kennedy Drive. I spoke with Gavin earlier about a project, I have, as a citizen advocate, I have a lot of resources that I use when people ask me questions on how to get help with something. I gave him about twelve brochures, I want to say, asked that the clerk's office scan them in, and that they could be on your laptop, so that if you had a citizen ask you, you would have that resource as well. I also asked the council, we're in an electronic age, those people looking at home, listening at home, I think you should be able to give comments too, and so working at, being able to email questions, or tweet questions, or whatever for the council, and be a part of the process from home, I think we should be able to do, and that's part of my ADA, part as a citizen advocate. I'd like to remind everyone that the outstanding debt, I went on the state website today, for the city of South Bend, the outstanding debt is two-hundred-and-ninety-million, four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-four dollars. That works out to over twenty-eight-hundred, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents per person in South Bend. The state thinks that anywhere between eight-hundred to fourteen-hundred is reasonable, and we're at double that, twenty-eight-hundred dollars per person in South Bend with the current debt load. I think the council needs to look at the debt bubble, it looks like it doesn't drop off till 2024, and so in considering new debt, considering taking on bonds and things like that, I think we need to be real cognizant of that, because if there's an economic downturn, which of course happens, and the co it suddenly drops, that's really gonna create a shortfall. And on a personal level, I helped someone who was homeless at the homeless center, and he's back on his feet, he has his home, he's back with his daughter, and I got to thinking about that. I took on one individual, I can't take on everybody, and I think that we need to create a, if you look at the AA model where someone has a sponsor-
You have thirty seconds.
I think that the churches and religious organizations could adopt one homeless person, sponsor them, make sure they get their clothes, their medication, get to their appointments, get whatever programs they need, I think, you know, what is it, light work among many hands, and I think that's something that we could do. Faith in Indiana might be a good bridge between the group of homeless providers and the faith groups in Indiana, in Michigan.
Good.
Did I run out?
Yep.
Did I make it?
Right on that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we clarify, could you clarify real quick, just for the record, we don't always do this, but with the issue with the bond, I mean, the monies that was scheduled for Miami Hills?
Yeah, and what I said earlier today is, we approve, this council and the Economic Development Board approved a bond for them to take out money for improvements, they never filed through on that bond. It was, because it was a bond within the municipality, had come through us for blessing, for approval, for them to do it, they never did follow up on that. I think they also went for a tax credit, and I think that might have came before us too, and they didn't do that. But there's some other, we'll talk offline, so.
Is it a newer ownership too, or with the same people?
Uh, no, not since you and I talked.
Okay, cool.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Uh, without an entertaining motion, is your? Some of them. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Not everybody.
What was that?
You're wasting time.
Thank you.
Did you get the copy of that paperwork that was here?
Did everybody get it? The initial security, sir.
Thanks for putting that in there, Sam.
Everybody got it?
Thank you, your work.
I know.
I didn't expect one, maybe, but it might be, oh, I don't know, I think that's one of the biggest things to talk about, but, yep, I think that's one of the problems.
Oh, my goodness gracious.